Let's do approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from the previous meeting of May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Move to approve the minutes in previous meeting of May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Anyone wishing to come up and make a comment right now before we head into the agenda items is welcome to do so. State your name, please, and address.
Yeah, hi. My name's Jane Fitkin. I live at two-two-six West Hewitt in the city of Marquette. I just came out to express my gratitude that you guys are considering adopting protections for wetlands. I'm thankful to have met most of you already through my work as the Director of Citizens for Safe and Clean Lake Superior. Yeah. You guys already know, but wetlands are really critical to our ecosystems and our communities. They filter our drinking water. They lessen the impacts of floods and erosion. They sequester carbon, and they provide indispensable habitat for wildlife. In Marquette Township, you've already lost sixty-four percent of your original wetlands, and if our area is to build resilience to the storms that continue to increase in intensity and frequency and the increased development that comes along with a thriving community, that number of sixty-four percent can't continue to increase. Policy is critical to protecting wetlands of all types and sizes, and as a local government, you folks have the power to protect wetlands in your community. I'd like to add that the type of protection that you're considering is also supported by your current master plan, specifically in objectives one-point-five, one-point-eight, and one-point-nine, all of which read as basically intending to prevent development in environmentally sensitive areas, and wetlands are specifically named as an environmentally sensitive area in those objectives. So again, thank you for your consideration of strengthening protections for wetlands in your community. This is an important step to take, not just for your community now, but for what your community will be for in the decades to come. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll head on to six-A, new business. Special use permit public hearing number zero-six-two-five-two-five-dash-one. Propose short-term rental land use on property located at eight-twenty-eight County Road five-fifty in Marquette within the scenic residential district. The parcel tax ID is five-two-zero-eight-one-three-two-zero-one-eight-zero-zero. The applicant is Jason Howes, eight-twenty-eight County Road five-fifty in Marquette. Eric?
Yep, so we have a complete application before you today. I've had some trouble with this clicker, so bear with me. For eight-two-eight, a short-term rental at eight-two-eight County Road five-fifty, you will remember, and we discussed this, that the request is scheduled to public hearing meeting, but this property was denied for a special use permit for a short-term rental back in twenty twenty-two. The minimum one-year time has lapsed, and they are eligible to apply again. Subject parcel is located in the scenic residential zoning district. On the map there, on the left is what we get from the Marquette County Fetch GAS program, and then on the right is what was submitted by the applicant. As far as the property lines go, I would go with the one on the right more so than the one on the left, as the layers on the GAS program are often skewed. It is just south of the relatively new parking lot at Sugar Loaf directly borders it. Surrounding zoning districts are Forest Recreation to the north, making up Sugar Loaf, scenic residential to the east, and south, and rural residential to the west across County Road five-fifty. Neighbors within three-hundred feet of the parcel have been notified. There's our three-hundred-foot buffer catch. Obviously, on the north side, it goes well beyond three-hundred feet, but due to the size of those two parcels, they are both obviously all included. Fees have been paid. Additional information is attached within your packet. Some of the kind of facts of the the application have changed from the original one. This is now the subject or the the property owner's primary residence, so he would be living here full-time, and then if if approved, would be would have the opportunity to rent it out on a short-term basis when he is out of out of the area. Here's the map showing, obviously with the cluster of green to the south, that's right around Phil's five-fifty. I believe we have seven or eight right in that immediate area, and then a couple, couple to the north, and then in the red shows the pending one tonight. We do have as well a couple even farther north than that, but obviously, it's pretty spread out beyond Phil's five-fifty, and we really haven't received any complaints about any of them, but especially about the ones in that Phil's five-fifty area, which is kind of beside the point tonight. I think that is all I really have. The applicant, Jason Howes, is here to address the commission or answer any questions that you may have, otherwise I could certainly answer any that you may have as well, so.
And did you say no written communication came in?
No.
Any questions for Eric before we proceed?
Just, you know, we really spent good time at our last meeting questioning Mr. Howes, and it seemed like, I think we have a lot of information from there. Satisfactory, in my opinion, but saw somebody could comment.
Okay. And would Mr. Howes care to make any comments before we open the public hearing? If there's any further information?
I don't think I have anything additional to add. Yeah, you've, we spoke at the last meeting. You got my application, so I don't have anything to add, but would be happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay. Well, then why don't we open the public hearing at seven-oh-nine? Anyone wishing to come forward to speak can do so now. Doesn't look like anyone's coming forward at this point, so we will... Just waiting for it to hit seven-ten. We'll close the public hearing at seven-ten. All right.
Did you have a?
I just had a brief comment. Yeah, I'm Robert Stone. I live at eight-ten County Road five-fifty. My par property butts up to his on the south or east. And last year, I opposed his application. Since then, Jason and I have talked about things, and he pretty much convinced me that things would be okay. You know, I mean, I'm pretty apprehensive about that whole area. It's really gotten crazy up there since the parking lot was put in and the gravel pits across the road that were never there when I moved in thirty-some years ago. So anyway, I'm not going to oppose him this year, and hopefully, everything turns out the way he wants it, according to the way he told me, so you guys do what you gotta do.
Yeah, I remember you were here last year, so just kind of wondered if you were going to speak again.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any comments, questions regarding this?
I guess we usually mention about the tax implications when they turn to short-term rentals, to make sure he's aware of that. I always mention about the house numbers.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
What else was there?
Uh, just those two things, I think. That we usually do, but you have house numbers on your mailbox?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on your house?
Can't see it from the road, though.
Yeah, I don't think I have numbers on my house, but it's at the mailbox at the driveway. I could add that if necessary.
So I would encourage that they're on the house, because the mailboxes get covered with snow.
Sure.
And the fire department or emergency service people, it's always good to have them, so they don't knock on the wrong door.
Yeah.
That would not only embarrassing, but could be potentially dangerous.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I can add that.
I think there's a size requirement, but I'm sure Eric or Jason will let you know that part.
Yeah, we can talk after.
Well, somebody wants to make a motion for this? That'd be great.
I move to approve the short-term rental as described in Agenda Item six-A.
Support.
Okay. Any more discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Any for our?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Linda Winslow?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's yes. Okay. All set now, I think.
Yep, you are free to stay if you want, but you're free to leave as well, and I will follow up tomorrow.
Okay.
Next steps.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Six-B, Wetlands Waterfront Zoning Ordinance Amendment Discussion. Eric?
So... I think Linda, Bethany, and Danny, you were all at the seminar a couple weeks ago, the Don't Get Bogged Down at Barreland Beam, so a lot of this is going to be kind of drawn from that, so I thank Jane for putting that on, and the other speakers as well. Talking about it there, there seemed to be some interest in tweaking our ordinance to account more for wetlands. They aren't mentioned within the ordinance already, but kind of reading through it and working my way through it, in my opinion, a lot of it is subjective as to whether it actually applies or not. As Jane stated, and I've got kind of some of the, obviously, some of the slides from that presentation itself, just showing state of Michigan as far as the wetlands in the state, covering five-point-five million acres or fifteen percent of all land. Western UP has twenty-nine percent, and Eastern UP has forty-five percent of the land mapped as wetlands. So historical wetlands make up thirty-two percent of the land in Marquette County, and to date, over forty-five thousand acres of those have been lost, so about fifty-four percent of the wetlands in Marquette County's coastal municipalities have been lost since pre-settlement.
Since when?
Like, pre-settlement, eighteen-fifties, eighteen-sixties, when Europeans first moved into the area.
Okay.
As far as Marquette Township, they've lost, we've lost sixty-four percent of our original wetlands, leaving just under two-thousand acres remaining in the township, whereas there used to be almost fifty-five hundred. So wetland protections in the state are regulated and kind of managed by Eagle at this point, obviously formerly DEQ, but is part three-oh-three of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. That requires a permit for anything that would impact wetlands when that wetland is connected to or within one-thousand feet of a Great Lake, connected to or within five-hundred feet of a regulated inland Laker stream, or if it's isolated but greater than five acres in size. That five acres in size is kind of pretty important in all of this, because basically, anything under five acres in size, the state's not going to regulate, or not going to protect, or however you want to say it. So also at that seminar with Brad Newman, Extension Educator from Michigan State University Extension, and he's, he's always a great resource when it comes to applying some, a lot of this stuff to local government regulation. So local governments can regulate wetlands that are two acres and greater, but less than five acres in size, and they can regulate wetlands that are less than two acres if the local government determines the wetland is essential to the preservation of the community's natural resources. As Jane mentioned, I mean, we do have items in our master plan as far as, or goals and objectives in our master plan that pertain to protection of environmental resources, so I think that this would be pertinent to that. And then there's some criteria down there as far as adopting an ordinance. And it takes me to this slide, and so currently, within our ordinance, there is a wet or a water body buffer, and I do, I do list it verbatim in, in your staff report. Let's see. Section twenty, so on the bottom of page two of the six-B staff report, I do copy and paste that section of the ordinance. So section twenty-point-one-three, requirements for waterfronted lots and parcels stipulates that all buildings and structures located on lots or parcels abutting any body of water shall be established in accordance with the requirements of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, just previously mentioned. Lots or parcels of land having waterfrontage shall maintain a minimum setback of seventy-five feet from the beach for all buildings and structures except piers, boathouses, and boathoists. Minimum twenty-five-foot natural vegetation buffer shall be maintained along waterfronted lots, and a maximum of twenty-five feet and one-hundred feet may be selectively cleared to afford a view of the water body. So just reading that, I, not to read it just to read it, but really, what the intention of that, as far as I see it was when it was written, was for, like, Lake Superior and some of those larger inland lakes, more so than protecting wetlands. We do define wetlands in our ordinance. However, it kind of falls back on, the definition as listed in the ordinance falls back on that definition as listed in the NARIPA Act, the Natural Resources, the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act. So as per our ordinance, basically, anything under five acres is not defined as a wetland, at least how I read it. I mean, it's, again, an ordinance, especially a zoning ordinance, is subjective in a lot of places, and I think this is one of those places where it is subjective. So I, under the potential amendments there, I mean, there's a lot of information in this report, and then to kind of boil it down just to those two paragraphs, you're kind of simplifying the problem, but, I mean, just to make the township zoning ordinance kind of more robust in protecting wetlands, I do say that section twenty-point-one-three, which I just read off, should be expanded to include wetlands as a body of water. That way, that, that section would protect wetlands in that way, the same way that we require when somebody comes to me and wants to build on Eagle's Nest, and I tell you, you need to be seventy-five feet away from the top of the bluff. So I would be able to say that to people that are building on a, or building near or on a property with a wetland. Obviously...
Define what a beach is.
As defined in our ordinance, it's deals with the high watermark and things like that, but in the case of, like, Eagle's Nest, it's basically a cliff, so there's really no sand beach, so that's where we've been using kind of the top of the bluff mark as, just kind of a natural, this is where the seventy-five feet starts.
If there is sand, what's, where does the beach stop? Where the sand stops?
Let's see how we define that. Because like, like I said, most of the applications we're getting when it comes to a beach is out on Eagle's Nest, so it's the top of the bluff, as I tell people all the time. As far as a sand beach, I do believe, like, the vegetation, where the vegetation starts is often used. Let's see. So beach, beach is defined as the strip of land between the water level of a lake or pond and the line of partially stabilized vegetated soils, which are not affected by wave action, or between that same water level and the toe of a bluff.
But if there is no cliff, but there's rock going right up to the water, is any of that considered a beach, then?
It's a good question. That's one of those subjective things, so.
Is this on inland lakes also, or just?
Yep. So there's no, I guess, no language proposed tonight, so really no motion needed, more so discussion. And I mean, I'd be open to hear your take on this, whether I'm way off or not, but, I mean, it does seem to me like a pretty simple amendment that could be made, although we do, like, for example, there's properties in Trowbridge that basically are entirely wetlands, and people can't build on it just because it's not stable to build on, more so than, not to say they don't want to protect the wetland, but I think that's more so why they aren't being built on, just because they are, the soil's unstable to build on.
Right, and we're not going to allow them to fill it in to make it stable. Because that's what happened here.
So it's up to your interpretation, then, is what it comes down to, like, if there's rock, there were no cliffs, or if there's grass right up to the beach and no sand, and...
Well, I mean, beach is pretty clearly defined.
The Michigan Supreme Court had a case about fifteen years ago where somebody wanted to block off the beach, a private landowner, and they had to define what the beach was because there was a public trust doctrine in Michigan that it belongs, Lake Michigan, or, in, Lake Superior and Lake Michigan, belong to the residents of Michigan. So when there's a beach, okay, then you have to decide, well, what is the abutting property owner's rights, and what are the rights of the public? And so it was defined as the difference between the, the edge of the water and the natural high-water mark. And then, as the, our ordinance refers to vegetative growth, if there's vegetative growth, you know that that's where the high-water mark ends, so anything between that and the actual water is public land. Out where I live, there's, you go down, it's, occasionally, you get some sand washing up there, so some people could, you know, potentially walk there, but it'd be difficult, but, but there's not much of beach there. But I think, I don't think we're necessarily talking about a beach in terms of a wetland. It's just that it happens that this particular portion, as I understand, by the way, Eric, thank you for the excellent staff report. It was pretty clear, and thank you for including the reference, reference to the Michigan DNR's paper, Filling the Gaps, which I thought was very good. But I think in that, I think what really trying to do here, as I understand from what Eric is saying, is to define a wetland as a body of water within our twenty-point-one-three zoning ordinance, so that we'll be able to have a buffer zone between a wetland that's less than five acres and any construction, so that it won't be destroyed. So it's going to be interesting in tweaking the language in that to not be confused with a wetland and a beach, but I think the main idea is just to define it as a body of water, so that it can have the benefit of a buffer zone to protect it. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, and either tweaking twenty-point-one-three, or this, I mean, or we could add a little section, maybe twenty-point-one, there already is a twenty-point-one-four, but twenty-point, whatever the next number available is, something like a natural feature setback, like this. So I, I mean, I would have, I would, I would say that a wetland is a body of water, but as we learned at that seminar, at least I learned, that a wetland isn't necessarily wet all year. It can dry for six months out of the year and still be considered a wetland, because the other six months, it's wet.
Right.
So, I mean, defining it as a body of water might not be, obviously, this would all be subject to legal review, but it might not be the best route to go, because in the summer months where it might be dry, or the winter months when it might be dry, somebody might come in and say, okay, there's no wetland here. I'm going to build. So maybe going by way of more a natural feature setback would be a good route, too. Again, I don't know. Like I said, there's no proposed language for you tonight. This is more just a discussion and kind of bouncing ideas off each other, but just a thought, so.
Well, I found this publication by the DNR very impressive. I, I won't pretend that I read all five-hundred and three...
No, I won't either. I found it, too, and I won't either.
But I did, I did come upon this one portion, if I can just read it, it might be helpful. And the heading is, "Why Protect Wetlands Smaller Than Five Acres?" "The benefits of protecting small, natural, isolated wetlands are becoming increasingly clear, as studies show how their unique soil characteristics reduce flooding, provide valuable habitat, treat stormwater, recharge groundwater. More communities are looking to wetland protection as a means of improving water quality and wetland restoration to inexpensively and effectively meet stormwater management requirements." And then it says, "Zoning and Enabling Acts Give Local Governments the Power to Protect Mature Trees and Native Vegetation in Arable Wetlands. Require vegetated buffer strips around important natural features such as wetlands, and implement other tools to protect wetlands." And then, this is sort of an important thing about property values. It says, "Increasing wetland protection is not just beneficial to the environment. Beyond preserving aesthetics, scenic vistas and open spaces that they provide can positively affect property values. Perhaps it is no accident that some of the highest property values in the state are found in communities that have adopted strong wetland, local wetland protection ordinances." So I think that, you know, the DNR's did a lot of work on this, and I think that's a pretty persuasive argument for trying to protect some of the remaining wetlands that we have.
So another point that was brought up at the seminar was some communities going by way of a complete standalone wetlands ordinance. I don't think we need that. I mean, we could probably use it, but I don't think we need it when we have existing zoning ordinance that we can kind of fold some of this stuff into, or, I mean, some of it already exists within the ordinance, but like, we've been talking about tweaking definitions and adding language here and there to bolster it, so.
I'm still confused about all that language in twenty thirteen. So if there is no sand there, and it's all just grass and weeds or whatever, is it seventy-five feet from the water?
From the water line, yeah.
From the water line. But if it's sand, it's seventy-five feet from the back of the sand.
Yep.
Okay. And then it says definitions. "For all buildings and structures except piers, boathouses, and boathoists." What does that exactly mean? Can, you can build piers, boathouses, and boathoists within seventy feet of that, seventy-five feet of that? So you can build it right in the water?
Mm.
Okay. So you don't need any special permits or anything for that, then?
You would need a zoning compliance permit.
Okay.
Because we would still require, like, setbacks from partial lines, but as far as the setback from the water, it wouldn't apply, being that it's, like, the purpose of the structure would be for boating or recreation.
So the only time that seventy-five feet applies is if there's sand there, and it goes from the beach, back of the beach, back. If there's rock, or grass, or weeds, or anything like that, it's from the water line?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Again, that's, it's kind of a subjective, maybe not completely subjective, but I mean, you can see how it becomes subjective when we're talking about different types of water bodies and with different shoreline makeups.
So then with the minimum twenty-five-foot natural vegetation buffer, is that in addition to the seventy-five-feet setback from the beach?
So what, what that is, is, so you got your seventy-five feet, twenty-five feet of that needs to be the natural trees or whatever was there. So you can't just go in and clear that seventy-five feet of all vegetation. And you're still seventy-five feet back, but you clear up the whole seventy-five feet of vegetation. You can't do that. You need to leave at least the twenty-five, is what that is. And then as far as the next little section on the twenty-five feet, or a maximum of twenty-five feet and one-hundred may be selectively cleared, that would be, rather than the depth of the lot, we're talking about the width of the lot. And within, say it's a hundred feet wide, you can clear twenty-five of it to be able to see the water.
And who would determine which twenty-five feet can be cleared?
That's up to the...
Home property owner?
Up to the property owner, probably, depending on where they build their primary structure. Obviously, if you put the primary structure on one side, you don't want, they probably won't want to clear twenty-five feet on the other side of the lot.
I thought it was very good of you, informative of you, to set out the different articles in our ordinance where wetland protection already exists, because it helps kind of bolster this idea that we, like, for example, Article eighteen, site plant review.
like for example, Article eighteen, site plan review, um, I read that again today. And, uh, before any site plan is submit, or when a site plan is submitted, or even a plot plan, the, uh, person wanting to develop that land has to identify these natural features which affecting development, including rock, bluff, water and wetland. And then, uh, for site plans, they have to define and show, show you and Eric where the location of any existing or proposed wetland surface drainage ways are. And if there's going to be any, and then eighteen point sixteen requires that they're gonna do any clearing of the land, they have to, uh, show you where the wetlands are and to give permits.
So I, for me to understand, you know, what we've got in the ordinance. Let me ask you a question, Eric, was it your idea that then, just that we're having a discussion today to see how everybody feels about this? And then if people are feeling like it's something worth pursuing, then you would go, you and Jason would work on some language and you'd submit it to us?
Mm-hmm, yep.
My question would, additional question would be, when you're doing that, in order for each of us, like when we had the, um, master plan group, you know, we met in the group and had a meeting, so that was the Open Meetings Act. But then, if I'm not mistaken, people were communicating with the planner just individually and not copying everybody just to get their ideas? Could that be a way that we might be able to make some questions or comments without involving the rest of the planning commission?
Certainly, yeah. Yep, and as you mentioned, and I mentioned it under the kind of review recommendations, uh, that Filling the Gaps document, like you said, it's hundreds of pages long. And I did start reading it, but, uh, I would like to review that further. Uh, because like you said, it seems like a great resource to utilize in any, any amendments we make on this topic.
So then for the, um, twenty-five foot natural vegetation buffer, if there's no beach there and it's all weeds and grass, do you just go twenty-five feet back from the water line then? Do you have to maintain that buffer?
I guess that'd be a way of interpreting it.
Set at seventy-five?
But I mean, that's, again, that's kind of the thing, I mean, no, I mean, Lake Michigan is like Lake Superior, but Lake Superior is not like Lake Enchantment, or it's not like some of the lakes up by fifty. So I mean, every water body is different, and so that's, it's kind of hard to write one section with kind of one definition as far as beach and use that to enforce an ordinance. So that's what I mean when I say it's subjective.
Well, you know, you're thinking beach, I just think of mostly, you know, the Great Lakes. Or, you know, when you have all the inland lakes, this is still applying to all that then too.
So yeah, I mean, when we say, when we say beach in the ordinance, again, people, and certainly I, think Sandy Beach, Lake Superior, but when we say beach, we mean more like, it could be any shoreline basically is the beach for the purpose of the ordinance, if that makes sense.
Seems like that has to be defined a little bit better.
Could be, that could be part of this.
Maybe, maybe we shouldn't even use beach.
Water line or...
Shoreline or whatever, because everyone sitting here is probably going beach, Lake Superior, sandy, whatever. And that's not true on the lake we have a camp on.
Right, same with us when...
Yeah, there's, there's no beach, well, there's no beach.
Well, Eric, you mentioned you could add a section that would deal with wetlands.
Or natural features.
Or natural features.
Wetlands would fall under that.
Yes, so you wouldn't have to maybe confuse like we're being confused with beach, so on and so forth.
That might be a better way of going about it than trying to fold the wetlands protections within, talking about beaches and things like that, so.
Because they're already mentioned throughout the ordinance as a protected natural feature, but it doesn't specify that you can protect it if it's less than five acres.
Yep.
So what about if you have a lake and then you have a bunch of swampy land from the lake, you know, going back fifty feet? Is that still considered wetlands then, I'm assuming? So then you have to be twenty-five feet back from where the swamp ends?
Yeah, that's the way of reading it, I mean, if, let's go back here. So just like looking at a map like this, um, which shows the wetlands, um...
Even along rivers, you know, it's kind of the same thing along rivers. If you have the river, then you have, you know, a lot of swampy land in there, which would still be considered wetland. So you'd have to stay back twenty-five feet from that or seventy-five feet?
Seventy-five feet, that's what I was gonna say. Um, so with these maps, like this Marquette Township map, and then I showed the state, or the county map, and then the state map, um, there are resources out there that GIS pro, like maps that you can look up and say, okay, here's a wetland. So as far as kind of to address your question for identifying, like what is a wetland? There's resources out there that we can use, uh, to do that. So when an application comes across my desk and maybe they don't have something labeled that they should, I can pull up one of these maps and bounce a question off of them and say, on this map, I'm showing a wetland here, and if we get some ordinance amendments into place, we can protect that wetland and say you need to build fifty feet or seventy-five feet or, uh, whatever the number is from it, so.
Yeah, it seems like somehow property owners should be aware of that because they buy a piece of property and then they've got, you know, a swamp there and they have to build seventy-five feet back from that and...
They don't have it, they don't have seventy-five feet from the swamp.
And that's kind of the, what I was getting at with some of the properties in Trowbridge.
Yeah.
That I get calls on that have been for sale for a long time, and I get calls on it all the time. And people call me up and, uh, asking to buy it and talking about it. And they say, well, it's all swamp or it's all marsh or however they call it. Um, and that's why they have remained for sale for so long is because they just can't be built on.
You know, you mentioned, oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
The average person isn't gonna really know anything about that when they buy it. And, you know, it just seems like this would be kind of hard on them if they buy it and then all of a sudden, you know, township ordinance, they can't build on it.
Yep, as we move forward with this, that's something we'll have to weigh, you know.
Where, on my property, on Eagle's Nest, we have what they call a femoral wetland. So six or seven months of the year, it's wet. And it's got the, uh, what was the little, uh, oh, it's salamander. And it's got the peepers, the frogs, you know, the singing.
On your property?
On my property, yeah.
You don't walk around there at night, I hope, do you?
Well, do you step on the salamanders?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I...
They close the island for that, you know, down there.
Yeah, I, we don't kill any salamanders. But I'm just saying, so that's an area that is, if you look at it in the dry summer months, when it's really dry for two or three months in the summer, you say, well, oh, what's a wet, why is this a wetland? Well, if you recognize the plants, you can tell it's a wetland, even though it's not wet. So, but as you say, there's waves of determining it, but six, seven months of the year.
So it's still considered a wetland?
Oh, it's a wetland, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even though it's dry sometimes, yeah.
And it's a, you know, it's a, it's a nice thing to have. And, uh, I was talking to, uh, you know, this article about it increasing property values. I heard that from another source too. I was talking to the Superior Watership Partnership, and they do conservation easements, you know? And, uh, apparently there's now a group of, a segment of the population that wants to buy a property that's protected in some way, in the natural features, you know, that has a protection. So I, I think this is, it's not gonna harm anybody, it's just gonna save our beautiful, what we love about this place, you know?
So we're not, yeah, we're not the only ones dealing with this in the state of Michigan. So I am sure there are other people who are working as hard as you are, trying to figure it out. But, um, I do know that we buried a lot of wetlands in Trowbridge Park over my time here. Um, and so I would like that to stop.
This, this, uh, Filling the Gaps article has got a list of... That's what happened in that order, you fit by your own glasses. It's got a list of Michigan communities with wetland ordinances, and I, I, I can share it with you, but if you look at it, it's got a, uh, there's at least, what, ten, twenty, thirty, thirty-five? So it's, you know, there's, we wouldn't be alone by, I mean, we're not gonna top the whole ordinance apparently, but we wouldn't be alone in wanting to be, you know, to help, help protect them.
And is there a, is there a date on that, like when it was written?
Yeah, this is the, yeah, you know what, I'm just gonna give it to you. This is from that, uh, Filling the Gaps, these are pages.
I think, I think I printed it off, I've got it on my desk.
Okay, well, here it is.
I just wanna see.
Yeah, you can have it, I don't...
Do you wanna come up, so we can hear you? That's the other thing age does.
Um, Jane Fitkin, two-two-six West U at Marquette. Um, that list is, comes from Eagle, it's probably from two thousand and ten, which was around the last time they updated the Filling the Gaps, um, resource. And it is, I believe it does only list communities with a comprehensive wetland ordinance. There are many more communities that have, um, protections in, specifically in their zoning ordinance, which is, seems like what you guys are considering. Um, so I could definitely like, at a later date, provide like resources to other communities who've done that, if, if that would be helpful as well.
Yeah, as I, as Jason and myself kind of move forward with this, I'll, I'll reach out.
Awesome.
Yep.
Mr. Howells, you figure?
Could I add something? Um, you know, Jason House, E two eight, County Route five fifty. Uh, I spent a long time in the Traverse City area, building homes and doing construction. And they're not making any more lakeshore, right? So as demand, um, increases, it's like the good building spots are kind of already established. People start pushing into the low-lying wetland areas. And what happened in, in some of these lakes around Traverse is they, they said, well, we have wetland protections, but some of the language said, well, except for piers or, and so people, it's a relatively new building practice, but instead of digging a foundation and, you know, just, or filling in the wetlands, they just, they drive, it looks like an ice auger, but they drive this pier through all the organic material down through the water, and it eventually hits solid sand or material below, and it's strong enough that you can build on it. So like you said, well, what if there's a lake, but there's some low-lying area, well, people wanna be on the water? So th- these piers just started going in all over the place. And, and then they would say, well, it's a boathouse, but it was a four thousand square foot boathouse, you know, on, on the lake. So like, my time there, I saw just a ton of the lakeshore get developed and kind of bar, eaten up. So these helical piers might be something else just to consider. Like, is it, is it where the building's going? Because the way they were working around it there is that the water can technically go under the building, and they weren't disturbing the wetland, but there's, there's still a giant home there, you know, like on the wetland. So just, just something else that I've seen, maybe to consider.
Maybe you could put like a size restriction on the boathouse that, you know, it's in there.
Square footage of it, yeah.
To avoid that.
Thanks for hearing me.
Thanks.
Thanks. So is, is twenty thirteen, is that what is currently in, out, the ordinance now?
Correct, yep.
So can we make a section twenty point one-three-five? Can you just put it between those things?
Yeah, you can make a subsection probably, hundred and twenty point one-three.
Because what I'm hearing is we, we don't want more stuff, we wanna include it in what we have.
Right, yeah.
So what's our next step?
Well, I've taken notes, we've got the recording, so I'll listen back to that and kind of, and, and you'll notice, kind of moving ahead here, but the limited animal keeping, we talked about it at a previous meeting as far as the backyard chickens, and I said I'd have language for you at this meeting, but I don't. It's kind, I propose kind of two different things, how to move forward. So back to this, I'll either put language together or come across another thing where I say, hey, I need your input on it, and I'll bring back another kind of staff report like this, and we'll talk about it again. But one of those two at the next or a subsequent meeting, so.
So are, are wetlands also considered open space then too? In Article nineteen?
Yes, I believe they are, although I do know on that staff report...
Nineteen oh five A subsection three point A. Natural areas, wetlands are specific types of natural areas under open spaces.
So you could use that as open space if you needed open space in your PUD or whatever then?
Yep.
That doesn't count in.
Yeah.
Right, it counts as open space, according to what I'm reading.
Yeah.
I do, well, I, I, on those two bullets there, Article nineteen and then Article twenty, uh, they do kind of contradict themselves. So that's another thing that might need to be cleared up in this amendment.
Yeah, that was confusing.
Yeah, I, I agree.
All right, well, maybe that's something...
Well, yeah, it says down and below there, they do not count towards open spaces. I didn't see that.
Maybe that's a typo.
We're finding out things here, right?
Well, it's always a good time to clean it up if you're in, if you're in there, right?
Yep, yep.
And also on Article thirteen for PUDs, I'm not quite sure what that means. A reference as one of the three qualifying conditions for granting a PUD?
So one of the qualifying conditions is, uh, like grants, granting approval of the PUD will, will result in protection of, protection and preservation of natural resources and natural features. And so within that little subsection, wetlands are listed as being a natural feature, feature worth protecting or being a natural feature that qualify for protection. So, so for example, with like the, the Forestville proposed PUD, uh, they reserved a lot of that space along the water. Obviously, it can't really be built on because of the topography and the rock, but, um, we would consider that protection of natural resources or natural features.
So by having intensity?
Right.
You protect?
Correct.
Open space, natural features, because you're not building it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that's what...
Well, then a lot of those lots that are gonna be down along the lake are gonna have like seventy-five foot setback from the water mark, because there's no beach there then.
Sorry, I remember it.
I remember there were quite a few lots along there.
Yeah, I don't remember the specific, I just mentioned it as an example, so, but I, I don't remember the exact setbacks they've proposed.
I'm seventy-five feet setback from a twenty-foot drop-off cliff, and I hope that we don't get any more of those storms that we got in two thousand and seventeen because I may have to move my house back.
Pretty soon you'll be sixty feet and then fifty feet and then...
I'll be dead by that time.
Put a bunch of boulders in there?
You know, that's a bad idea, revetments erode. You, they think they're good because they protect a certain portion, but what they do is they disturb the normal action of the waves and the normal deposit of sand. And so what happens is the adjoining properties get their beaches eroded. There's a thing lawsuits about that down in, uh, in the dunes.
Yeah.
That's what happened to all our big boulders along the lake, that's why they're putting all of them with a crush rock in there, so they're not getting that...
Even those railroad ties, they made a mess at our camp. They put railroad ties along the water edge. Yeah, it's a mess.
That's why the Superior Watership Partnership got a two or three million dollar grant to take those big boulders away from the lakeshore and put the little smaller rocks and then plant stuff there. Because it preserved that beach from getting eroded.
Maybe that's what we should do with the brick wall so I can get picnic rocks beach back.
Yeah.
They built those big boulders and put a bunch of gravel.
All right, it's good to wield that.
Okay, well, let's just move forward here.
Okay, anything else about wetlands?
Not at this time, no.
You good, Jane? You good, Jane?
Yeah, let me know if you guys have any more questions, I'm happy to try and answer.
And just an important note that we learned at that Bob's Down is that it's more expensive to have to bring back the wetlands than just to just preserve it now, today.
Agreed.
Through wetland restoration projects cost millions or more. You don't want to have to do that.
All right, let's move on to beekeeping and chicken keeping and whatever else you can come up with.
Limited animal keeping.
All right, Eric?
Yes, so, some of this is going to be kind of repeat from last time, but just for, uh, sake of the audience and just kind of refresher, I'm going to go over it all again. So you don't have to read it all, that's on the screen, but what's on the screen right now is the definition as listed in our ordinance for agriculture, and then the different types of agricultural, agricultural activity, including light, traditional, and intensive. So this is the existing ordinance, uh, and the keeping of poultry as defined, as an accessory use is presently allowed in the scenic and rural residential districts with an approved special use permit. So anytime somebody wants to keep chickens in the SR or RR districts, they need to come before you guys to get approved. The number of animals permitted on the, uh, depends on the acreage of the property, as well as the nature of the coop setup, whether it's an overflow watering or a liquid manure system. Uh, I tried to kind of look up what exactly those are, I wasn't able to really find a definitive answer from looking on the web. Um, and I mention that because, again, kind of convoluted, and I think the rest of this is kind of convoluted too, when it comes to accessory residential keeping of animals, as we're talking about tonight. On this next slide, so, these different types of activity, um, so with the first one, the light agricultural activity, that's the cultivation of more, more than a garden but less than a farm. So that's kind of what we think of when somebody has a chicken coop in their backyard. And then you got traditional agricultural activity, where it talks about, um, plots of land comprising a fro, farm devoted to the raising of domestic animals and/or the cultivation of crops in quantity for the primary purpose of producing income. So selling whatever you're growing or raising. And then intensive agricultural activity is obviously, again, commercial purpose, just a, a, a kind of a higher scale. So each of these agricultural activities allow a certain, or, a certain number of animal units per parcel. And that depends on acreage. And so then when we go to what an animal unit is as defined in the ordinance, um, this is what we have. So each, so, you got cattle, and then pigs and horses and sheep and goats, turkeys, chickens, ducks, and those are each given a number. And so with the light agricultural activity, I think no parcel can go over one animal unit. And so when you look at what chickens is, and you do that math, I mean, depending on the acreage, we could have people with quite a few chickens. Um, that are, again, would be only, they wouldn't be permitted to sell these eggs, or sell the chicken meat, or anything like that, uh, because that would obviously qualify as, uh, commercial, commercial use or commercial sale.
So in other words, uh, just to interrupt you a minute, the question, so chickens with overflow watering system, whatever that means. The unit is what, is, uh, one, one hundredth.
Correct.
So, then, how many, how many of that would, you'd have to, what, a hundred chickens to make one unit?
Yep, so, under, again, under the, and this is in your packet too, so it's probably easier to read than what is up on the screen, but light agricultural activity, uh, maximum number of domestic animals or poultry species permitted shall not exceed one animal unit per acre. So if somebody had a one-acre plot of land, and they had chickens with the overflow watering system, if they came to you and made a good case enough, they could have up to one hundred chickens on their one acre of land.
Yeah, but that doesn't say, uh, a minimum of one acre, it says up to one acre, right?
Yeah.
So, in Trowbridge Park, you adopted this, as it is, without any amendment, you could have an eighth of an acre, and they could have a hundred chickens on their acre.
But I will remind you that the private poultry, as we listed in our ordinance, is only permitted in the, as an accessory use, in the scenic and rural residential districts. They are not permitted at all in the urban residential.
Well, I know, but I thought that this whole discussion.
It, yes.
About raising chickens was because some, some guy in Lansing had a political stunt about, everybody's got to raise chickens. And so, we then started talking about it, and we said, well, one thing, the way he defined it, you would have to, you'd have to have at least one acre to have any chickens, and then that wouldn't fit into people in Trowbridge Park who have smaller parcels than, than one acre. And so, I thought we were trying to accommodate urban residential.
We are.
It's coming.
It's coming, yeah. And I mean, I would, I, I would partially agree with you that, yeah, that might have, have had something to do with it coming to our attention, but I've, I receive calls about chickens, especially in Trowbridge, all the time. People ask, either, somebody saying, my neighbor has chickens, and I got to email, or send a letter to that person saying, you can't have them, and they get rid of them. Or it's somebody that says, I want to get chickens, and I got to tell them, you can't have them, because we don't allow them.
Let me, I, I just was on the island of Kauai, in the Hawaiian Islands.
They're everywhere, yeah.
They, they're, they're just, they're. They're at the airport, they're at, wild chickens.
Roosters.
They're, they're all over the place, they're like, they're, they're more populous than pigeons in Chicago.
Yep.
At least they have eggs, unlike the pigeons. Well, I know, but they do.
They do lay eggs, anyway, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, so, um, I just wanted to kind of lay out, uh, again, the, how we define agricultural activity, these animal units. And then, here, and I think this is from Article fifteen, uh, the use, use district nomograph. And as you'll see, above poultry private on the bottom there, light agricultural activity and intensive agricultural activity. Obviously, neither of those are allowed in your urban residential. So turning attention back to your packet, under the proposed amendments. Like I said, under the previous agenda item, I did intend on having language for you tonight, but this kind of dilemma came up, and I, I need some guidance on how to move forward. So the existing ordinance requirements are prohibited to further adoption and can be seen as confusing to residential applicants who wish to keep chickens as, as an accessory use. The classification of agricultural activity and utilization of animal units is needed for more intense agricultural uses like commercial farms. However, for accessory residential use, simplification of this ordinance language is desired. As discussed, in addition to seeing interest in keeping of chickens, staff is also seeing interest in rabbit and beekeeping. Considering the existing ordinance language and the desired amendments, there are a couple different options. Uh, one would be assigning rabbits and bees an animal unit number and continuing to administer the ordinance as written. And then, and/or, while also allowing keeping of chickens, bees, and rabbits in the urban residential, as well as the rural and scenic residential as a by right use, or a special use, or however we want to classify that as whatever, or however we want to, whatever approval we want to give to that. Um, other option would be to remove chickens from this. Or, now that I'm thinking about it, keep the chickens on there for, again, if by chance somebody comes and says, I want to have a commercial chicken farm, we might need to use those animal unit numbers. However, when it's a accessory use to a residential, I would suggest not using this to regulate that. And I would suggest adopting an ordinance, I include in your packet, munis and townships. But it's an ex, an excerpt from munis and townships ordinance on limited animal keeping, um, which, which addresses, uh, chickens, bees, and rabbits in a very kind of straightforward way.
Can, can we not have an ordinance for urban, for urban residential on limited keeping of animals? And leave the other one as is? Can we not have a separate one for urban?
I, I guess we could.
Because that's who's calling you, right? It's the people who live, who have a lot that is sixty by one-twenty, and they want to have chickens.
Well, it's the same.
Well, no, because this, this is a whole, this is a whole deal. But the whole deal works for outside of the urban residential, but urban residential today says you can't have bees, chickens, rabbits, nothing. I hope they don't all have three dogs, that's what I'll tell you. But I can tell you, since I live in Trowbridge, people have bees and chickens. And they didn't ask. And they've had them for a really long time, so, kind of like, can we, can we say, an urban residential in Market Township, this is what you're allowed to do, and this is the process to do it? And then you can clearly give those people that, it might save you a lot of time, Eric.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Under the light agricultural activity definition, it does state cultivation of more than a garden but less than a farm, where the primary land use is residential, and the production of crops and husbandry of domesticated animals is primarily for the consumption, enjoyment, and/or use of the occupants, so accessory to the residential use. So it's already kind of spelled out in that definition, so maybe somehow folding that light agricultural activity under a, maybe a subsection, kind of how we were talking with, talking about with the wetlands. Creating a subsection that says, when it's an accessory use, here's how it's regulated.
Yeah.
And we could include language like this munis and township ordinance. As far as you can't have more than four hens or six hens, or whatever number is, no roosters, you can't slaughter them.
Yeah, they, yeah, they're kind of noisy when they get slaughtered, you know.
So if anybody has any of these things that aren't al, already regulated, bees, rabbits, you know, whatever, those would be grandfathered, and they wouldn't need to meet the new requirements?
Well, they weren't supposed to be there at all.
Well, they're not regulated, they, they're allowed to have them.
No, they're not.
Yeah, bees aren't in there, these or rabbits aren't in the ordinance.
Well, yeah, apiaries.
What is?
Uh, bees are, they're in the, uh, resource production.
I don't think they're allowed in Trowbridge to have anything like that.
Well, not in Trowbridge, but they're, they're in our ordinance.
Right, outside of urban residential, they can have whatever it says.
Yeah, I would like, apiaries, the only place it's allowed.
Resource production.
Is resource production.
Yeah.
It's not allowed in scenic.
Right.
Lake, or whatever, you know.
I just think we're, well, in my mind, we need to fix this so that people know, because I told our neighbors, no, you're not, you're not allowed to have any chickens, no chickens.
And then beyond just what language we put in, I think, what level of approval is another
Yeah.
topic for discussion, whether it's, we're going to keep it a special use permit? Or is it going to be by right, meaning they're going to submit an application to staff, and as long as it, the coop is set back where it needs to be, and they're not, they're saying, we're, we're only going to have six chickens, then staff approves it.
Yeah, I like by right, that's what I'll say, because it could be a real mess if we have people coming here. Cause they, cause they already have them out there, okay? So somewhere you.
Well, the thing with a special use permit is that if they're not following the directions, we can revoke it.
Yep.
It's why right is kind of harder to, you can't do that.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I know the city of Marquette has stuff going, I don't know what Nagani Township has going. Trowbridge doesn't have one acre lots, for the most part, people don't have one acre.
Can you put in there somehow that nothing can be grandfathered? That when the ordinance passes, they'll have to meet the new ordinance? Whether they have them or not?
Good question.
Cause that would really save a lot of problems for you.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise you're going to have a bunch of arguing going on.
Well, we're not the first people, um, encountering this, because.
No, but I think.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, whatever you can find, don't you?
If you don't, if it's grandfathered, and you can still keep what you have there.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, Eric, I don't know what's out there in Trowbridge, other than chickens and bees.
Yeah, like, I, I, previously, I think at the last meeting, I mean, we, I've gotten calls about bees, and I get calls about chickens all the time, but rabbits, I mean, maybe a call, and one or two calls in the last few years, that's, the in, level of interest for the rabbits, I would, I would say is not there like it is for bees and chickens, but, um, looking up examples, as far as other municipalities ordinances, rabbits are almost always included. So I think it's just a very similar level of kind of agricultural intensity between bees, rabbits, and chickens. So, that's, again, that's really why it's in here. So, three years down the line, when everybody wants to raise rabbits in their backyard, and we don't have to have this discussion again.
Yeah.
Cause we already have it in our ordinance, so.
Yeah, well, and whatever we put in the ordinance, we have to be able to enforce. Okay, so that's always the hard part.
Erratically. I've got a bunch of questions, I don't expect any, necessarily any answers to them tonight, I can email them to you later, but I think, for one thing, is, do we have a four-H expert that we can consult, either from MSU or NMU to tell us what an overflow watering system is? Liquid manure system is, because that, that's key in our ordinance, no, I don't even know what the hell it is.
Right, and like I said, I, I tried searching online to kind of, then I got a general idea of like what they are, but like, as far as I saw, the li, liquid, or the liquid manure system and the overflow watering, like, the overflow watering was for chickens drinking water, and then the liquid manure was for disposable waste, so it seemed kind of like two separate things to me.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah, so I, I don't know why.
I think we need some clarity on that, because that seems to define the number of chickens.
So to answer that question, if Brad Newman from MSU Extension doesn't know the answers to those questions, I almost guarantee you he knows somebody that does. So I will, uh.
Does a chicken cross the road?
Right, I will reach out to him and see what he knows on that.
Uh, another question I have is, I'm looking at the, the munising ordinance, they talk about the size of the confinement for the chickens and the rabbits. Where in our ordinance is any description of the houses, uh, for chickens and rabbits?
Nowhere.
Okay. Another question I had is, uh, no, that was it, basically, I mean, we talked about beehives. Oh, in the munising ordinance, they don't say, they say a maximum of two beehives should be permitted, but they don't say how, uh, what, what the lot size would be. I think we need to, you know, I mean, like, for example, for Trowbridge, we have to kind of.
It's different.
And maybe, maybe some people are going to be disappointed, because they got too small of a house to have chickens, I don't know.
Cause that is a very consistent thing in all these ordinances that I saw, I mean, obviously I read a lot more than just the munising township one, but I thought munising township one was the most kind of pertinent to us. But as far as like, for example, the restrictions on placement of chicken coops. All structures related to the housing of chickens shall meet the setback requirements for accessory structures as described in section four oh one, which probably just lists the basic setbacks, and shall not be closer than forty feet to any existing residential structure on a neighboring lot. So they, the limited animal keeping section further restricts placement of that chicken coop in addition to the accessory structure requirements.
So that, forty feet, that could make it almost impossible for some people in Trowbridge to have chickens or bees or.
But at the same time, I think language like that is
Standard.
Standard and good to include, because I don't, I mean, I don't want to chicken coop. Like, with setbacks in Trowbridge, seven feet on the side, seven feet on my neighbor's side, I don't want a chicken coop fifteen feet from my window. So I mean.
Right, or you're swimming pool.
Further restrictions I think are useful to include.
In our current ordinance, do we address roosters?
No.
I think so.
Oh, for outside of, for.
Are we just saying chickens? Not that munising one, they specifically say in F one, roosters are not permitted.
I didn't see it on that.
Yeah, I don't see that it, it just says.
We need to do like a, a words or, for roosters, see if anything comes up.
So we have a little bit of work for you, Eric. Sorry.
It's not like a major project.
So like I said, I, I. I would advise that we keep the animal units, um, whether they still are used to regulate. are used to regulate chickens as an accessory use in the RR and SR districts, so whether or not we use them for that, I don't know, but I don't think we should. I'll put it this way, in my opinion, I think except chickens as an, chickens and bees and rabbits, limited animal keeping as an accessory use to residential uses, I think should have their own section, like that munising township section. And we should keep this for regulating commercial farms and larger, larger scale operations.
Or where it's currently permitted as a special use.
Right, correct.
Well, if we, if we would make it, if you would do a by right for Trowbridge Park, that would be discriminatory for the people that live out.
So what about?
You'd have to, you'd have to abolish the special use for everybody.
What about by right approval for six hens or under, six hens or under on any parcel in any district? And then if you're, you want more and it falls within this language or these requirements, then you need to get the special use permit.
Yeah, but then like Bethany mentioned, you have a little more enforcement power if it's a special use.
So do all special use permits have to come?
They don't want to do a special use, that's the whole point of this.
I know. What are the chickens? That's what I wanted to know.
What if you just, instead of saying what districts, you went by lot size?
That's the way some ordinances do it.
Just do that instead.
I don't think it was this.
They're going to vary in all these different districts, and it's going to depend on the lot size, what you should really have on there, not by the district.
Yeah, I remember one, don't remember what location, but it was to keep, in order to keep chickens, you need a lot size minimum one acre, and then here's, here's your rules. No more than six hens, no roosters, so on and so forth.
What's the, what's the standard, is there a standard lot size in Trowbridge Park?
Mm-hmm.
Is there?
Mm-hmm.
What, what is it, sixty by a hundred?
Um, it depends on which side of Ontario Street you live on.
What's the majority?
So the people that live to the east of Ontario, there's, are mostly, I think it's sixty by one twenty, one thirty-five, the other side it's one ten, it's one hundred maybe, one ten, um, by, yeah, so they're different sized lots.
There is some uniformity.
Yep, mm-hmm, mm-hmm, if you go by the ball field and back into that area down in there, the lots are very small.
You could just do kind of like what you have with dogs here, and have the sizes of the lots and then how many chickens or rabbits or whatever you can have in, you know, on each, on each lot they have here.
That's the way to do it.
Except I don't understand this last one, three dogs, less than five acres, four dogs, five to ten acres, all districts, six dogs. What's all districts then?
That would be everyone.
Yeah.
What, I don't even think it's legal to have six dogs in a house, but they're talking about kennels too.
Yeah, I didn't, to be honest, I didn't pay any attention to that, because I was just, I was just looking at the section 421, the limited animal keeping, so.
Come on up.
I, just a note, I also sit on the City of Marquette's Planning Commission, and we also have a, it's limited residential animal keeping, and it's six hens, six rabbits, or ten bee, ten beehives, and it applies to, in the city, we have like low density residential, medium density residential, and multiple family residential, and they're only permitted in the medium and low density residential. Um, so, and it's permitted by right, it's not a special use. Yeah, 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 yeah. So you might, I don't know, it might be helpful to like, talk to like Dave or Andrea and see if they've had problems with that.
Doesn't go by the lot size at all?
No, it's not by lot size, it's just by the zoning district, yeah.
And I would assume that they've got, and I think I, on the previous staff report, it was the surrounding municipalities and how they deal with it, I'm pretty sure I had City of Marquette on there, so I may have seen this before, but like I was mentioning, for like the restriction of placement of coops.
Yeah, I think that it all, yeah, it says, I just checked to make sure, because you guys were talking about it, but yeah, the setbacks have to require, or have to meet, has to meet accessory structure setbacks.
And they have an application to fill out?
Yeah, literally if you look up like, can I keep chickens in Marquette, it'll come up with that application.
And they have a fee that they pay, just once or annually?
I think it's just the permit.
A once.
Like one time, I think it's like sixty dollars or something, yeah.
Well, so you're not getting, everybody getting chickens and then saying, oh, we're done with that, and you're getting people who are committed.
Right, yeah, hopefully, I think, yeah, I haven't been on the planning commission for a super long time, so I can't necessarily say personally like how it's played out, but I think it's been a good thing in the city so far.
Jane, do they have any regulations as to the size of the rabbit hut or the chicken coop?
Accessory structure, I think it just has to meet like accessory structure amount. I think it said that the run for chickens has to be at least two square feet per chicken, so if that helps.
And they have to be fenced in?
Yeah, it has to, it said like.
Not free range.
Rabbits must be enclosed to the property, so, yeah. So they can't be able to like escape easily.
So, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, they don't want that to happen.
They have that in Florida too, at the very bottom of Florida, the chickens run all over the place. All over. Okay, Eric, what else would you like us to give you to do?
More complicated than the marijuana ordinance.
If you want to make an omelet, you got to break some eggs, right?
I guess. All right. Are we done with that?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'll come up with something, whether it's another staff report like this or for some proposal language, I'll come up with something and we'll keep this moving forward, so.
I know you're really happy with us there.
What else would you like us to give?
This stuff seems like it's in the weeds, but it's.
It's pretty important, really.
I mean, this is, this is the type of stuff that really affects, I mean, this relatively minor development, but it is development in some shape or form, so I mean, this.
Okay, no unfinished business, no correspondence, Linda, township board report?
Oh, the township board met on, oh, this one says June fourth, is that when we met No, we met after that, didn't we? Nope, June fourth, okay, so it was an exciting meeting, we paid all our bills, we took in all the money that was owed, and we did some policy discussion about personnel committee and job descriptions, and we paid the MTA dues for this upcoming year, so know that you have access to education, okay? And Lynn does it pretty regularly, right? Yeah. The well road, the well road is going to be paved, as is the dead end of Dyright Street is going to be, no, not now, we're not going to pave it?
Not, all we're doing on the well road is about.
The approach.
Ten feet or something.
Yeah, it says the well road approach, sorry, not the whole thing. Yeah, we would be broke. So the dead end of Dyright's going to be paved too, and that's just down on Vanderboom. We had some committee updates, but most of the committees didn't meet. We had some announcements, Lynn's been following up at the landfill, so listen to how, what's going on at the landfill, so they are raising their tipping fees on July first, just so you all know that, make sure you empty out your full water bottles before you throw them in the garbage. And other than that, we were good. You guys got the minutes, right? And the agenda, and our next meeting is July, yeah, wow, yeah, that'll be exciting, right? And community day, I'll just put in my plug as August second, make sure you come for free ice cream cones.
You should hear on the TIF too, when they were going to get a presentation from.
Oh, from Renovari.
And the county treasurer, Jackie Tomlin.
Yeah.
Renovari too.
Yeah.
They, they had a meeting, the.
Brownfield?
Yeah, Brownfield meeting, this couple weeks ago, and Renovari was supposed to make a presentation, everything was, do you know what came about on that?
Email I got today from Ann, I haven't read it yet, I just printed it, and it said that the county commission and the Brownfield authority both approved the project.
Oh, good.
That surprised me, because I thought it had to come to the board first, but I could be wrong, but I haven't read it.
So it's passed that verbal anyway, right?
I guess so, yeah.
And at your next meeting, is Renovari going to make a presentation again?
No, Ann is supposed to, and Jackie Tomlin.
And it said, that's a purely informative presentation, there's not, the township board has already given Renovari until September first to close the deal, right?
They have a closing, a signed property.
Okay.
The purchase agreement, that's the only thing we've seen, we haven't seen anything on the TIF, which is what this is, it's thirty-five pages, I think.
Okay.
On how the funding and the capturing of the funds and five-year deed restriction and ten years on the TIF, it's all.
Well, that ten year on the TIF, the last township board meeting I attended, am I mistaken that that was acceptable to the, to the township?
That's when we agreed on the purchase agreement, that it would be ten years and September first for the closing.
So those two things are still the same, and we hopefully assume it's going to go.
Still have to get approval from the state, but.
Okay. Well, now that Andrew is working under the hierarchical thing of UP, of UP, whatever it is, UP.
The S U P.
The S U P, right, Marty Fatati is probably going to go through with that, hopefully.
Any rock committee report?
Nope, they canceled their meeting this month.
And planning and zoning?
Yeah, so the quick update on the master plan, we did finally have some correspondence with Bria, who was the, Lori was the project lead who was coming up and presenting, she either had to step back or they removed her from the project, so Bria is now in lead of that, and we are getting some chapters finally sent to us, Jason and I are reviewing those, and we would anticipate having, right now in hand, we've got, I think, chapters one through four and some of the appendices, and they're sending us more probably every two weeks or so, but we are finally getting those, so we will, once staff has reviewed them, we will bring them to the, to you guys for your review and comment and things like that. The deadline for that grant that is funding our master plan update is in February, so with the public notification requirements and the fact that we need to have it available to the public for at least sixty days before approval and things like that, we are hoping to get all chapters and a complete draft, I think by end of September, early October, in order, in order to start that process, to get it complete before the grant deadline. So I, we're still, we're still, I mean, the timeline had to be shifted and adjusted, but we're still within that, and we're confident that we'll, we'll get it done, but we'll have draft drafters for you probably for the next meeting, so.
Do you have the answer to the big rumor going around Marquette right now about what's, if Aldi is going in?
I do not, I.
It's all over Facebook, they're going into the.
And that's being that, I, I'm not on Facebook, so I didn't see it on Facebook, but I heard it kind of through the grapevine, and that's all I've heard too.
What, what is it?
I've heard through no official channel, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to elaborate.
places where Best Buy used to be?
Yes.
Everybody said that they're going to move up to Ishming and then they sold it to Aldi.
Oh. I do know they're moving, but I don't know who purchased it or if anybody purchased it, but I do know they are, they are moving out of that building. I know that for sure, but I can't, I can't confirm anything else.
Somebody, somebody said that they talked to the manager in Eskenab and he confirmed that they're going to be building soon, so.
Wow. So what about the VA facility? What's the, nothing?
We've heard no further updates, yeah, I mean, with that groundbreaking, I would assume they're probably back in, not to use the term again, but kind of back in the weeds of doing engineering and all that, all that type of stuff. And being that they are a subject of zoning, I mean, we really, they sent us a site plan to take a look at, but we really don't, really don't have any formal say in the process, so.
Did you hear anything further about the VA?
Just that they're having to scale back on the project, I don't know what that means, their funding somehow got changed, or maybe the expenses are too high, they had to cut back, their first priority is to reroute the road, can't do anything until that's done, so they've got to meet with the road commission and get that, I should ask Pete.
And the only other thing I would add is the demolition at the former Jazz Restaurant site, at least the buildings is done, as I understood that they were going to rip up all that asphalt too, and there is a sign out there now for a coming soon, the car wash. So I would anticipate getting a site plan from those folks at one point or another, and that will, Jason and I were talking about this, we're, we might have to get an opinion from Roger on this, so there's the, that property that, this, the property that we're talking about right along forty-one, on the back side is undeveloped right of way, and then on the other side of that undeveloped right of way is residential. So the question for legal would be if, with that right of way, if we consider that commercial use of that car wash or whatever goes in there, that commercial use, is it adjacent to residential even though there's a sixty-foot right of way? In my opinion, yes, it's adjacent, but that's obviously not the be all and all. Point being though, if you'll remember, like with this daycare down the street or with a few others, I'm not thinking of any others off the top of my head, but being that even though it's a commercially zoned district, being that they were adjacent to residential, it required a special use permit and site plan review by the planning commission before they were approved and then started building. So with that one, I would think that we would require the same level of approval, being that they are adjacent to residential, but we will see, we haven't, as far as I know, maybe Jason's been talking with somebody, but we haven't seen a site plan or heard from them at all, but we will keep you updated as we know, as we know things, so.
What, what's going on with the blighted property on Lincoln Chamber Road?
Here's what it is.
We were waiting for the good weather so that our contractors could get in there and scrape the stuff off.
Yeah, and we're, that's another question for legal, and we've been working with Roger on it, but with the tickets that were issued last year, whether we can go in right now without any letters or any kind of.
No, just.
Preliminary enforcement action before we take the real enforcement action of a ticket and then sending a contractor in, so with that ticket being issued last year, the idea is we can just send a contractor in right now.
Now, maybe, this would be a question for Zap, but because we enacted a new blight ordinance, you might think, okay, well, it can't be retroactive and apply to this pre-existing, but my understanding is every day that there's blight is a new infraction, correct?
Yes, I mean.
So that resets the clock.
And that, that was a, that language was included in our past ordinance too.
So we can use the current blight ordinance to enforce our actions against that property?
Sure, yeah. And then as far as that, that staff person, the seasonal temporary staff person, I do know the job is posted, I'm not sure where the hiring process is at, obviously we're getting into kind of the middle of summer here, and like Debbie just said, we're waiting for the good weather to do enforcement, and the good weather's here, so I've got, I was talking with Lynn and Jim before this meeting, I've got a bunch of list of properties I need to go by, either drive by or get out and take pictures that I need to do this week, that I'm getting calls on, so right now I'm dealing with a lot of kind of those more m-. that I need to do this week, um, that I'm getting calls on. So right now I'm dealing with a lot of kind of those more minor ones, not so much the big problem ones, that, or the couple problem ones that we have, all those, those need attention, um, the smaller ones are kind of consuming my time right now, so.
And you got bees buzzing and chickens plucking?
Yeah.
Rabbits riding on your feet, I mean, you got.
You're busy.
That's all I got, unless there's any specific questions.
Questions? Questions? Nope. All right, any announcements? Any more public comment? All right. Give us a thumbs up. How about any more comments by any of you guys?
Our next meeting is July?
Ninth.
July ninth. And we have lots to do, so.
I will, uh, be absent from that and, uh, my daughter and grandkids I haven't seen for a couple of years out in Tacoma, Washington.
Okay. Please, it's huge. All right. All right, and we're adjourned at eight thirty-four.